Twenty-two and a half hours.
Two and a half?
Everything's great, everything's great.
Cause it's like seven million.
Sarah, please sit down.
Please.
Yeah, it's all about money.
I'd rather, I'd much rather be insured.
Call this meeting to order, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the government, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We will watch in the evening, uh, special presentation, we're gonna review the preliminary two thousand twenty-six operational capital, this time the capital budget also.
So, go ahead and just say something here, something on here, you guys have a talk.
It's actually raining.
Oh, is that raining?
Yeah.
Still gonna have.
I guess we're gonna check the roof out, see if it leaks.
Okay, tonight is a work session, as a reminder, work sessions are very informal, the elected officials are primarily the ones that are talking, actually, they're the only ones that are talking to the public comment, unless you're called upon. And the purpose of a work session is to get into the nitty-gritty of things. This specific work session tonight has to do with a continuation of last week's budget meeting. And the purpose is for the elected officials to ask us any questions they want, or give comment, uh, or prioritization to the. Walked into the last. I guess we should also just briefly, um, thank all of you for your, your service and for your willingness to serve, congratulations to those that won, as well as those who were not asked to serve. It's an equal blessing.
My wife's very happy.
Okay, so with that, there are two things, uh, that we would highlight, um, that are kind of continuation of the last meeting. The first is a bit of a model, um, and I'm sorry, we tried to get these two screens to cooperate, but for whatever reason, the technology worked at five-thirty for five minutes. And then, and now it's not, so, um, basically, when we have general fund related stuff, we're gonna pull it up on this one, and capital needs of water and sewer, I think we're gonna throw on this screen. But in short, um, we did meet with the staff about the water and sewer rates, uh, since the last meeting, and came up with a bit more of a proposal and or model, uh, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, so we did a bunch of research, uh, comparing what other communities around us are doing for water and sewer as far as the tier structure. And, um, we were surprised to find out a lot of them don't have a tier structure, they have flat rates. And so, um, the other thing that we found is we are calling this, um, minimum bill a surcharge, but what we're finding is a lot of other communities are using it, uh, as, uh, I think Jim mentioned one day, as debt service. So, it's the debt, the minimum bill, or the, what we're calling the surcharge, is towards the debt service. So, I would actually, um, like to discuss, uh, that recommendation, because I think calling it a surcharge is a little bit confusing, even though we believe that it would go towards, um, projects, as Jim indicated. But I do think debt service is, um, a better way, cause then as the debt service gets paid down, then you can reduce the surcharge. Now, in this case, we could not possibly charge a surcharge that is enough to cover all of the debt of the, uh, in the sewer fund. So, that would not be, it would, it would just be going towards, so, um, go ahead.
Is there a lot of glare on that? I'm getting a lot of glare. That's what I was thinking. Turn some of them off? Everything's on one switch? You paid a million dollars for a liquor.
Yeah, so, again, as Lisa noted, tiers are not necessarily normal. That said, you use tiers to do economic development here, uh, to lower the rates for, to make more attractive for industrial users to be here and bring jobs here, right? So, we left, uh, the tiers for water and sewer, but did try to match them up, so that there was a, there's a, rather than just a two-tier approach for, uh, water and then a four for sewer, we tried to do four, and based it off of the size of your water lines. And then, the other thing that was common is that, that base charge, uh, in other communities, we found often that the size of the water line is dependent on what that's the charge is. You call that a surcharge of fifteen dollars, and what we're saying is that other communities have a base charge that's by the size of the water line. So, in this model, um, it assumes that the larger the, like a three-inch line or greater, could be charged something like a hundred and forty dollars, uh, which is one of the ways that you can still incentivize due to volume, um, a, a larger industry or something. Still getting, contributing something, but at the same time, um, getting a discount for doing large volume. And then, on the wastewater side, again, four, four or five tiers, based on volumetric rate. So, we can tinker with this if you like, um, but in short, the model that's up here on the chart would be somewhere, something like twenty-one, twenty-five, and then down to six, seventy-two. So, here's the other factor that went into this. There seemed to be no rhyme or reason as to why the tiers were the way they were, um, so one of the things that we did kind of, uh, mess with in this model is, um, you have your basic low volume, and then the next tier down is seventy-five percent of that. The next tier down is seventy-five percent of that, next tier seventy-five percent. So, as before, if you wrapped it, it would be, it would do this, now it's a nice consistent, you know, exponential decrease. So, it feels way more justifiable, um, so anyway, that's the model that we have so far.
The other thing to note is, when we were looking at the data between the two communities, our system is having a hard time, uh, this, doing comparison. So, we, we felt like some of the data was a little bit skewed, but we're working with what we have.
Okay, so, I don't know if we have much more to say on sewer or water right now, wanna shift over to general fund?
Yeah.
Question on sewer and water, so if we use the number one, we end up with a balanced budget, sewer and water?
We could make it balanced, yeah.
It's easier to do, sir.
Yeah, now that we have like a consistent, I mean, do you, I guess, A, do you agree with the philosophy of the larger the water line, the larger the base cost?
That is correct.
Yeah, I think that's good.
And then, second of all, do you agree with the concept of having this depth approach of seventy-five percent for each hundred thousand? That seems justifiable, everyone's generally agree with that. Then if you're okay with that, then it's a simple matter of what do we need to raise, then we set the whole number, and then it'll auto calculate for us. So, yeah, if you agree to that, then we can, we'll figure it out. Okay, on to the general fund, so this is that labor of love thing, as Lisa calls it, this is where you have discretion. I mean, to a large degree, with the water and sewer fund, I know we spent a lot of time on it last time, but you don't really have a lot of discretion over it, because the previous boards have committed you to debt, um, there is a certain size, a certain base number of people, et cetera, that you need to operate. So, there's really not a lot of flexibility in how much is raised and how much is spent, the question is, what's the distribution? And so, now that we have that kind of established, we can sort of set water and sewer aside, and move on to the general fund where you have a lot of discretion. I mean, if you wanted to say, we want to, I'm just throwing something hypothetical out there, we want to cut the police force in half, or double the police force, you have that flexibility, uh, whereas you don't really in a lot of the other funds, right? So, the, the question that we kind of ended with last time, your homework, was, uh, what are the priorities that you see? And so, Elliot, for instance, threw out that, like to see an increase in codes, economic development and so forth, and so we, you know, took those notes, um, and crosswalked it, now, the rest of you, if you have anything more, but, uh, it's the rest of you, your chance to kind of throw out, what are your priorities? When you look forward in the new city in twenty-twenty-six and beyond, what kind of programs are missing that you'd like to see funded? What kind of programs are we currently offering that you think we could decrease?
Well, in the economic development, I mean, technically, that's just a byproduct of a bunch of other things, if you really look into that. So, I think that deep dive into what needs to be done to be able to produce economic development, which is, uh, a lot of, I mean, so many different things that go into that, and reading up on this and doing some research, uh, I think, you know, getting somebody as, as the priority to take a look at it, to see, what would our focus be? And I know you touched on, uh, if you say the rust belts or something like that, uh, and some of the things they did, so, kind of looking towards, towards you guys on, you know, what can we do there to do all these things that were, uh, we do have economic development?
I think Elliot was suggesting that we actually hire economic development coordinator, is that?
That was a lot of it, yeah.
I can agree with that.
There ha- there has to be like a comprehensive plan that we're putting forth as a community to attract business and people, it's not just gonna happen.
I agree with Elliot, what are the things we have to do to make that happen? And there's a, and there's a lot, if you read, if you really research or read up, there's a lot that goes into that to, to make it more viable to have economic development. So, if you have nothing to offer here, who wants to come here? Right, and they look at everything, okay, look at your hospitals, your, your crime, your schools, what do they have for, you know, your, your labor force, you know? If we put something here, can you supply four hundred jobs, you know what I mean, in this field or something like that? So, there's, there's a lot that goes, goes into that, so, having that established, I don't know whether you do it as a consultant first, where you figure out what we're gonna do, but that would be something I, I would recommend.
So, the current model, and I believe the current budget, is that you're, um, sending six thousand of dollars of general fund to the redevelopment authority to do grant writing and that kind of planning and such. I'm not sure that that's sufficient, that's the status quo, and that puts in the budget, correct? So, the question, I guess, for you is, do you wanna create a position that does that? Do you want to direct more money perhaps to the redevelopment authority and pass them with, with that? Or what, what are your, what's your inclination?
I think you need a specific person, that that's what they're concentrated on.
That's what I was kinda asking.
Have them set goals and, and check the goals, you know, and keep an eye on things, and make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do, I think you need a dedicated person, that's, that's a very important, big position.
That's why I was asking what you experienced in the past, but, you know, do you have a recommendation on that?
Sixty thousand in the budget for, Lisa, I think you, contractual services?
Yeah, seventy-two thousand.
Seventy-two thousand?
Uh, if we want, if we were adding a person, I figure wages and benefits for that type of position would be around a hundred K.
So, we're.
I think that extra forty's worth it.
Unless you were thinking that goes for something else, or is that just in the budget thinking we would be?
Let me talk about it today.
Yes.
I wasn't thinking that it was for the RDA, it's what we're giving, or sending to the RDA for services that they're working on.
Is there one specific area that you have helped, uh, in the past, hire, uh, economic developer, um, you think with success, uh, like municipality? Or do you, have you hired a firm, or lobbying firm, or what we usually hire?
There's no usual, I think, every instance that we've been involved in has been different. I would say that the most successful that I've come across was an instance where the redevelopment authority took the lead. Actually, there's several instances where I can think, redevelopment authority took the lead, and they were subsidized early on by the municipality in order to get things up and going, but then they became pretty much self-sufficient. And in that sort of business model, there's an incentive for them to provide, uh, value to the businesses, so that they're contributing and or using revolving loan funds, because at that point, I don't wanna say it's desperation, but it's, it's built-in accountability to have that redevelopment authority need to be standalone if the business model doesn't work, and they're not, if they're not creating value, the business model doesn't work. If the business model doesn't work, then they can't pay the people. So, generally, I kind of steer that way. The other thing is, then you have a, a board of directors that are specifically tasked with setting that, um, community and economic development vision for their staff, and holding them accountable. And the reason that I think that's helpful is because you as a board, particularly in the new year, have such a broad scope, and I wouldn't expect any of you to be, you know, the expert on water, sewer, fire, policing, um, codes, economic development, community development, grant writing, et cetera. So, the more, and recreation, tourism, et cetera, so the more you can kind of push down to authorities and say, this is your dedicated task, go do this well, I think you will be served better.
Would these authorities be made up of, uh, volunteers throughout the community, and be unpaying people?
Yes, uh, in general municipal, both, both the Urban Redevelopment Act, um, and Municipal Authorities Act say that they cannot be paid. Just reimbursed for travel expenses and that kind of thing. So, yes, you'd be looking for five to seven usually members of, uh, each of these authorities.
How many authorities are you planning on creating here, Ben? Would it just stop at redevelopment, or would we move into other areas?
Let me pull up the consolidation project. So, first of all, I'm not off doing anything without your direction, for one thing. I would offer a suggestion, uh, suggestion that's in our current plan. Uh, was to reauthorize the redevelopment authority, library authority, hospital authority, I don't really know if you need a parking authority, but.
Are there eight members?
Um, and then, uh, the, where is this, uh? Yeah, the recreation authority and the emergency services authority are somewhere on this page, um, because I think there was a, I wanted to see a significant scope and scope of work change there. What's the hospital? Why is the hospital on there?
Isn't there a hospital authority?
Yeah, it's on there, yeah. So, hospital authority is, you know, off on its own, library is pretty much on its own, redevelopment authority would probably need some level of financial support, uh, parking authority, I have no idea if it's necessary or not. Recreation authority, I think you do reactivate, it exists already on paper, the new council would just have to reauthorize it, and then appoint members to it. And I, and my, my recommendation here would be, that group would then be responsible for the profit and loss of the pool, uh, the, um, ball fields, and the parks. Subsidized by a certain amount of tax mileage that's assisting in your current model, uh, so just basically taking that and, and running with it. And then, the other thing that I do still think that you ought to explore heavily, um, is doing an emergency services authority. We have a legal opinion now, as I think I mentioned at the last meeting, that fire is eligible, um, and that they can charge, um, fees for all types of residences and businesses and such within the community, in order to, to provide, uh, EMS and fire coverage. Now, that could, by the way, relieve a lot of general fund burden, I, it, it's not possible to build this budget based on that, because it's not set up, right? But, it is very possible that if you set up this authority in twenty-twenty-seven, uh, the general fund could be relieved of, I don't know how many mills of taxes, if instead it was transferred to fees that the authority was charging. You know roughly how much fire is gonna cost?
About seven hundred.
So, let, a cou- a couple of mills just in operating and, um, something more in the debt service then? So, more than, probably like three mills would be considered capital, might be able to come off your general property tax bill in favor of essentially having it shifted to an authority model. So, that could be pretty sizable. Does that answer your question, Sam, about authorities?
Yes.
Okay, so we were on economic development, it sounds like the general consensus of the elected officials is, there should be a position that is full-time and dedicated to driving this thing. The question is, is that at the redevelopment authority, is that the city proper? What is your preference?
I'd like to see city proper.
Same.
I think you could start as the redevelopment authority, let things go into the new council, new year, and work at it from there, and see how the outcome is, my opinion.
Okay, gentlemen?
I agree with that.
So, start it as maybe a somewhat increased line item. By the way, one of the other reasons that it may make sense to have it as the redevelopment authority is if it's your own employee, obviously you can manage, but, um, not contractually, not, not as forcefully, I suppose. Whereas the redevelopment authority is one step away, and you can say, you meet these metrics and you get paid, or you don't, uh, which is a nice accountability structure that you kind of don't have as their employee. So, there's pros and cons.
What's our financial obligation to the RDA in the twenty-six budget?
That's the seventy-two.
Was that the contractual?
Of course, that contract ends at the end of the year, so this would just be a continuation of the status quo. So, Lisa threw out a number of a hundred thousand, as of, it's currently at seventy-two, if you want a full-time person, I think her, her guess is, raise that to a hundred thousand. Is that something that you would entertain in the twenty-twenty-six budget, sending to the redevelopment authority, so they could hire a full-time employee and manage all community and economic development?
So, that's really only gonna be a salary of sixty-five, seventy thousand. I think it's an important position.
Can I have it considered?
You know, we gotta, we have to have a plan to grow.
Yeah.
If we don't have a plan, and we're just kind of, you know, we're just gonna do more of what we've got, and it, businesses are moving out, they're not moving in, I think it's, you gotta have, I'm not for getting somebody in here.
Through the redevelopment, is that what you're saying?
Through the redevelopment.
Okay, generally, I think I'm hearing five, at least, members saying, hundred thousand redevelopment, yep?
Yep.
Okay, cool, next priority. You'd said parks and rec, probably more about what you want.
We, we need somebody that can take over and turn the ball fields into something more than what they are.
Okay, so you want a person, again, that's kind of driving that?
I would, yes.
So, might I posit a, um, a similar, a similar model to the redevelopment authority? You have a recreation authority, you could, again, incentivize and say, you're currently taking like one point, I'm sorry, not one, uh, about a third of a mill, and directing it towards recreation. And so, with that money, you could essentially say, hey, recreation authority, we're turning this money over to you, in exchange, make the ball fields profitable, manage the pool, et cetera, et cetera. So, similar concept, they could then turn around and hire, contract whatever, people or a person in order to manage that.
Yeah, somebody that was, I mean, they're, they're wonderful assets, but they're way underused. And, and in five or ten years, that turf's gonna need to be replaced at, Scott, a million bucks?
It'd be pretty expensive, but you wouldn't do the whole thing at once.
Right.
You'd need to deal one year, a couple of years later, you'd, I, I am not sure what the price.
A certain layer's gonna be, need to be done.
Like anything.
Like anything, right.
How does the city handle that now, is there someone? Is there someone in the wing that?
They get it fixed and you pay for it.
No, I mean, like managing the ball fields, who does that?
We, we do that ourselves.
Yeah, we do that.
We bring a maintenance crew in from the turf company once a year in the spring to make sure everything's good. Other than that, we take care of ourselves. Kenny Carr's our park guy, he does most of the stuff.
I was talking like scheduling, who?
You're talking about scheduling the ball games?
Yeah, who, does the city have employees?
Now, we have somebody that we pay, I forget his name.
Jim Pullman?
Yeah.
Jim Pullman does all the scheduling.
And we've kicked this around for how many years?
A lot of times.
Four years.
Yep.
You know, and we all agree that it's needed. You know, and so if we're gonna do it, we put the money in the budget and we say, hey, let's make this profitable. That's, that's gonna be their key goal, to make our ball fields presentable to people that come in from the outside.
Yeah, and, and, and somebody that can use, get them to be used year-round or at least nine months out of the year or something.
Develop park programs, expand the pool, like bring in, I'd like to see like chairs, rentals, umbrellas, like better take advantage of the assets we have. But you gotta pay, there's, there's multiple parties involved with booking the field. There's Little League, there's, right now we have Magnus Marketing under contract who books things and does advertisements. So there's other parties that we need to be considering how they are either in or out of the fold.
What, what do we pay in Magnus and what do we pay in Jim Pullman?
Mr. Pullman is ten thousand. And I think Magnus varies because it's commission-based, so I can give that information to you.
I mean, it might not be that much more to get somebody to do that.
So you're saying going forward, they would be under the direction of the rec authority? They would need these outside?
Well, they would, they would have money to hire somebody.
The authority?
The authority, yeah.
Okay.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna themselves do anything.
I mean, they could.
They could, yeah, sure they could.
But.
Not expected, yeah.
So the city would still take care of everything? Or would the authority hire someone?
Yes.
So the city wouldn't do that anymore in here?
I would love to see them hire somebody. But I don't see how that's even possible.
The authority?
Yeah.
I would say the short end.
Cause it's pretty technical, isn't it?
It's technical as law, it's a lawful law.
These is, to take care of turf fields.
But I don't think it's, but it's not the, the Parks and Rec guy that's gonna be doing fixing the fields and, you know.
Yeah, the maintenance.
You're still, you're still gonna need the maintenance guys. You're still gonna need your guys to do the maintenance.
But in this concept, even though public works employees might be actually doing that work, the rec authority could essentially pay the city back for doing it so that you have a clear profit and loss for what those fields actually are costing you.
Yeah, cause we don't know now.
Not, yeah, I mean, not very definitively, right? And, and actually Joe Mitchell, Matt Checkione, and I did work out a concept paper on this as well as a budget that does, that does, I think, work. And it's still, it does still use public works employees to do the maintenance and such, but again, there would be a transfer of cash. I know this is kind of circular, but tax revenue comes into city, city gives, gives the rec authority a portion of that, and then for various services, the rec authority, including paying back public works, would send a portion of that back to the city in order to cover those costs. So it's, it may seem circular, but at least you are actually directly paying for the service that you're getting and accounting for it.
And they would have to be self-sustaining after a while also.
Yep, right.
And that's the goal.
That is the goal. Then you also have, by the way, one neck to ring. I mean, right now.
You're tough.
But right now, like if something in the pool or rec or whatever, like there's, there's no one in charge, right? And so you might get mad at Scott for something and Lisa for something. I mean, I, you know, whereas in the future, I think in this model, whoever that person is, is the person that is accountable for the profit and loss of those fields, of the pool, et cetera. And again, like we said last month, you're always gonna have a loss on the pools, for instance, you're, you're honestly gonna have a loss on all these things. The question is, are they creating enough value, social value, that it's worth investing tax dollars into? And by way of example, last week when we were talking about the pool, you said, well, we lost twenty thousand, whatever it was. Great, that's not that bad for the value that it creates to the community, that's acceptable. But right now, I don't think you, like, we don't even know how much we're losing or we're gaining. We know we're losing, but, you know, we don't know what the P and L is. All right, so with, with that, I think, I think you've been pretty clear on a directive there. Moving on to the next item, which was library, the library has asked for an increase of at least, what, ten thousand dollars? Councilman Gelfen last week indicated that that's a priority to him, but I guess the question is, to what degree? Do you wanna do a ten thousand dollar increase? Do you wanna like round up the mill to something like point four rather than point three, three, four, six? Or what, what do you think of it?
I wanna say one more thing about the library, we own the building, the, the city owns the building and Becky and her team have applied for a Keystone Grant for window replacement, which is something that they've needed done for a couple of years, she told me. And the project is a little over eighty-six thousand and the grant is a fifty-fifty match, so they will also be asking the city for forty-three thousand five hundred for those window replacements. We did put that in the capital program, but I just want you to be aware of it as you're having this discussion about the library.
Wasn't that ten thousand or something with the, to pay the employees? Was that part of that, that, that part of it, not the building, correct? If I remember correctly, is that what you said?
Yeah.
The library also gets their state funding based on a per capita rate that's contributed by the community, and they can't get that state funding, whatever their portion is, without our portion as well. So I think that ten thousand fit into that also.
Okay.
Okay, so with library, you're talking a straight. Hey, is this number, the hundred and forty-two thousand, is that what we currently were planning on?
Yes.
Okay. So they're asking for like one fifty, something like. You could do something like, I mean, four or five gets you, gets you really close to that, to the request. Or if you want to do more. Do you do point four, seven, five?
Do we know what they received this year? Do we, is Sandy combined?
It was about one, I think it was about one forty-two.
One forty-two.
Yeah. Yeah, the, this number is very, very close to the combination of the two, the point two, point four-two. And so if you take it up to point four or five, it gets you that ten thousand more. That said, point four or five is kind of a weird number to get on your taxes, so, like just for giggles, we did half mill, that would get them a hundred and seventy thousand. Do we hear anyone that wants to, we're currently set at point four-two, do we have any takers for point four-five? Yeah, that works great. Point four-five?
I think they had a, I think they came and requested money last year and we rejected it.
That's about taken right there.
Yeah, point four-five is almost done.
And how much did you put into capital, was it forty-three? For windows? For the windows or something?
We put fifty thousand in the capital for the library, or we mean the windows, I thought the number was gonna be about forty-eight.
That would match our grant, right?
That would be the match money for.
Match money for the grant.
Which is a fifty-fifty.
Yeah. If you did a half of, an even half mill, get another fifteen thousand towards that. Even if you didn't do the windows in 2026 and built, built the money for a couple of years, then you're really, really striking distance. So do I have any takers on half mill?
Well, is it advantageous to, to wait two years versus the rise of the cost of materials versus the energy loss, you know?
If I had a crystal ball.
Absolutely. Aber cadaver, you know?
I mean, that's a very good point. Cost of materials is going up faster than inflation.
I'll bite at point five.
Okay.
Is your what, point four, point five for a straight?
Yeah, point four-five versus point five. So that means in a couple of years, you could.
So would we, we would bank the money in the general fund budget or would that go right to the library for them to?
You can do it either way, but it has to be dedicated. You cannot raise a.
Cover.
Yeah. It is library money, you could hold it, but it can't be used to buy a dump truck or something. It has to go to the library.
So I think you should hold it in anticipation of them actually receiving the Keystone Grant.
So resolution on the table is do a half mill, give them a hundred and fifty-two, and anything above and beyond that, we hold in escrow a little bit until it can pay for a project or be a match for us, the building project. Sound good?
Sounds good, yes.
Cool.
Are we defining that project as the windows or is that just?
Well, we own the building, so I would suggest that would be ongoing items.
All right. Where's my cursor? Next thing, code enforcement and blight remediation.
That's a big one.
Zach, if we gave you more money, what would you do with it too? Fight blight?
Still like to have a little bit in reserve for demolition projects. I know that got us that in the budget here a couple of years ago. I mean, I'd still like to have that reserve, I don't know if that's helping. That would help out.
Money in there? Do we have any projected tear downs?
How many, do you have?
There's probably like eight or less.
Eight?
There's gotta be eight, isn't there?
Yeah.
Yeah, eight or 10. And that's not looking hard.
They're on what, seventy-five hundred?
Seventy-five hundred to ten thousand.
Ten thousand. Yeah.
Okay, I think we put fifty in and figured ten billion, I think is what the number was, just as a estimate.
Is that something we always sum up?
The demolition?
Yes.
Yes.
With the township's bigger excavators, that's something we put off the window when we have more manpower available?
We've done it in the past when the buildings are separate from everything, but most of your buildings that are like this are too close to the other houses for us to take the liability on and do it.
I think that the building out by Treasure Lake on two fifty-five you guys took down.
Yeah.
But it was a house with nothing around.
So we don't have, everything has neighbors real close that we're thinking of?
Not everything, but I mean, there are some that do that, or they're in a location where even that excavator's not capable.
Yeah, that one on Brady Street, I, I would have to be a professional.
Yeah.
Don't want nobody help. Yeah, so if it's a values to answer, but Scott answered, you know, they have done.
Yeah, if we can do them, we'll build them.
Okay, I didn't know.
It's fine.
If we have a couple we can do? Yeah, but they, the professionals take on all the liability and that, that, that relieves us.
Yes.
And any, anything, any harm done, you know?
You wanna stay out of the news as much as you can.
So Zach, tell us about, so you would, you would like a line item, which I don't think we have any line item right now for demo. So twenty K? Five K? Fifty?
Twenty K would be. Twenty, twenty K would get you two houses. What's it a while you get one for five grand, or most over ten?
Maybe three.
Or more. Pins. Right.
Okay, anything, what else would you do for, when you, when you said code enforcement and blight remediation?
I, maybe another person.
Another person, so you currently went from one to, well, one to two, but you just grew your, the size of the municipality by.
Yeah.
A lot, so. You want another person? That's, that's, that's one of the ideas would be, would it be helpful to have another person within your department?
It's always helpful to have another person, and you can, you know, divide and conquer.
Yeah, and it might leave you, free you up to do some more planning kind of activities rather than just going out and doing enforcement, right? So you're talking about, I think we're talking about an enforcement officer.
Yeah.
An officer. Who would then enable you to not do as much enforcement, but actually do longer-term planning, work on zoning. One of the other things you need to think about is although we're smashing your current two zoning ordinances together, they really need to be like completely overhauled and modernized.
Yeah, we need to go through the comprehensive plan process to see what everything, what changes have been done in an area that'll stop that, get a good feel and redo that whole zoning one, so.
Right.
And that's a pretty large task.
So I do see how it could be advantageous to free you up from the code enforcement complaints, so that you basically use your brain and you have a couple guys that are out there actually doing enforcement.
Yeah.
Does Tommy currently do enforcement?
Yes.
We could all just start doing inspections, permitted inspections.
Right.
And then be able to keep that money to fund that person.
Did you hear the inspections?
Mm-hmm.
So.
I don't think we have anybody on staff that can inspect it.
No.
No, you'd have to, you'd have to get trained.
No, I'm the certified DCO, but I don't have any inspections or.
And we use.
Pennsafe.
Pennsafe, yeah. They take a pretty big chunk, and think of the hospital, I think their permits were what, permits for the hospital are four hundred and forty thousand?
Well, that'd be good here.
Just for the hospital?
Well.
No, that's what you're saying, every year it's.
They do a lot because they have to, they have to permit everything.
Three hundred, four hundred thousand they get paid.
Yeah, it's, they, if they redo a row, they have to get a permit, just a permit. And that's, that's quite a bit of money that the city could keep for that. I think there'd even be a profit in that.
Do we bring income?
Yes. Thirty percent of the inspection fees that Pennsafe would get, we, we get thirty percent of that. The township currently gets twenty percent of it, so that process, everything for the city, we do thirty percent.
Do we have enough income that would at least cover half the salary of a new person?
Yeah, Pennsafe took in roughly a hundred and ten thousand dollars in inspection fees last year. I mean, that's, that covers an inspector. The city, I would say probably easily brought in a hundred thousand also. So, I mean, but that's one, that's a lot of inspections for one person. I mean, when you're talking three hundred permits a year. From commercial to residential, that's more than one inspector. And if you're gonna do planner reviews, you're looking at a staff, not just a person for that.
I have a feeling you're running pretty ragged, you.
Yeah, there's a lot going on.
You, you, glad, yeah. Absolutely. We've had two in the past, township won the city one, and looking for help, so it's, totally understand why we're.
Add somebody in there and take a look at it, see what it looks like. Budget, right? I mean, you're, you're structuring a budget, budget right now, so when you get down at the bottom, you see the numbers.
Too much, too little.
Yeah.
Okay, so go ahead and mock it up anyway.
I would.
Sounds like we're all in pretty much universal agreement there.
I think as a separate line, we'd wanna say, what, twenty a year for raising houses?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, you're the final number.
Oh, I think you need one of them now.
Well, twenty a year, that's a, a good start. If we were taking down two or three houses a year, when's the last time we took down If we were taking down two or three houses a year, when's the last time we took down a house?
A couple of months ago.
If I took down in the city, I don't know where in the township. They've been using CDBG money in the township, so.
What, Tozer?
Then we just do.
That's the last one I remember taking now.
I think it's on Brady Street.
There's still many that need taken down right now. If we have a fire, we have to tell it down, is that coming through the home insurance charge?
Yes. Yeah, we have, we have the escrow if they have insurance. We have an escrow or that's.
Okay.
But if they don't have insurance, then it's all.
Come on.
Then all we can do is lean the property and hope that, that when they sell that we get back.
Sometime. I think you need more than twenty.
Go ahead and take it down.
I think you need, I think personally, I think you need fifty. I have to work with Zach on these, and then we have to dispose of them.
Yeah, that's one nice thing working with like management is we can typically hit the dump each way whenever we're cleaning up a property like that. At least that's how it's been the ones that I've done.
Correct. Once they provide the.
Here's your guys.
Okay.
We still didn't get that number, did we?
No, what's everybody think? For demolition?
Dev- demolition, twenty thousand's two per.
Yeah.
You know, you're not gonna get three out of that, you're gonna get three out of that, right?
Maybe.
Can we?
Depends.
Close.
Yeah.
Can we sell thirty thousand?
How about forty?
Thirty-five.
I vote for thirty-five.
All right.
Okay, thirty-five.
How about we'll throw in thirty-five and if we need to budget adjust something one way or the other, five thousand bucks, we'll do that.
I'll be down here.
Okay. All right, we're now through the things that Elliot threw up the other day, so moving on. Jim, what do you got?
We have a lot of empty lots in the city. And a lot of them substandard lots, and we're trying to think outside the box, do generate tax revenue versus consolidating lots and just somebody having a bigger yard, is there a way that we could look at, what are these, mini houses or what do they call them?
Tiny, tiny house.
Tiny house, homes and.
Huh? Patio homes, what's the base?
I, I don't know, but anyways, is that something that would do to get, you know, it actually, one, create some, a place for somebody to live? You know, you look at the size of some apartments, but this is actually something that's on its own lot, stuff like that. If there's some way to possibly do that, and of course that increases the tax rolls, it helps create housing. And is there that much of a need for it? I don't know, I'm going somewhere out there as a suggestion.
One thing that you are seeing in growing communities is accessory dwelling ordinances. In those kinds of situations of accessory dwelling that normally wouldn't be able to be a standalone home. Think of a mother-in-law suite kind of.
Yeah.
Thing. They're bringing teeny homes in, or tiny, whatever you want to say. And I'm not sure if the current ordinance allows that, don't all your structures have to have a foundation?
City ordinance does not allow it, township has a section for what they call the elder cottage, which is the accessory dwelling on the same lot, so they, they passed that a few years ago. And I know they have a couple of them, but not over a month.
Yeah, we have two, I think, that took advantage of that change.
You can even give those lots away if somebody put a house on, it would make it taxable.
But we don't have control of a lot of these empty lots.
Are you recommending the city builds those, or we offer a land out to contractors to build those?
Hey, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there to see, one, I don't know how many lots there are that would meet that criteria, okay? Because if you have a substandard lot, no one's, substandard lots, nobody's gonna build.
Well, yeah, we do, we own two hundred acres, we just picked that up, or is that gonna go for commercial lending?
Well, that property up there, what you're talking about, behind the hall there and stuff like that, and we talked about this years ago, trying to do a deal with the gaming commission. We thought the one section, commercial, and the part that you could come on in off of Juniata Street, where it, it's a nice area, and you could actually put some sort, reserve that for a housing development to, where people can build houses, you know, in that area. And I think the way it's, if you look at, the way it's laid out, that makes, to me, it made sense back then when we looked at it, so. I think that's something that, if you look at that way, but the, back to the, back to these substandard lots, I don't know how many they have, some of them's pretty small. You know, some, somewhere fifty feet wide, right?
Twenty-five.
Forty-five, so, you know, what, what could work there? Trying to throw something in there to, at least somebody look at it to see if that would be able to, you know, get more things on the tax rolls, I mean, they'd use water, more users for water sewer, stuff like that, so.
Some of these lots have water and sewer, I know.
They, they all would, in the current city, they would all have water and sewer lines there that they could kind of do with it, yeah.
But they can't, but they can't build now because they, they don't meet that standards.
Something to look at, I just wanted to bring that up.
Good idea. We need housing.
Does Scott still here? Does DuBois City charge a water tap fee?
No.
Same the township does, why don't we standardize that?
As we answer your ordinance?
All right. Yeah, we'll have to codify that in the new ordinances, but in every case where there was a fee that either of you charged that the other didn't, we assumed that you were going to charge it in the new year.
Okay, so the city, new city will be charging a water tap fee?
Yeah, what I can't say is whether or not we built that into the model, but yes, that is the.
There's a line item here, but we don't have any dollars to it.
Okay.
Where is that line item, Lisa, the tax roll?
In the water funds.
Okay, in the water funds, okay, thank you. Jim, when they come to do that, that would, and Zach, they would have to pay for all the permits, the, the builder or the homeowner, whatever. They, they, they have to come to us for all their permitting.
Yes.
And there's costs associated with that too.
Well, yeah.
Okay. Any other priorities that you all want to see funded?
Do you have the MMO figured in those pensions?
Yep.
Okay. Look high. So does the health insurance.
Health insurance is almost two million dollars, and the MMO is.
You have, you have thirty-six thousand for life insurance for code enforcement?
One and a half? No. We must have something, we have some lines screwed up.
Okay.
Because that is coming from the pension spreadsheet.
Other priorities? Time to move on to capital? All right, so we're closing down the programs, but if you have another one, at least, you wanna pull up the capital ends?
Can you guys figure five hundred thousand dollars a day in water sewer general, that's sinking?
Oh, yes, yeah, let's just make sure we were all under that understanding that the fees for water and sewer should yield a half million for water and a half million for sewer for capital improvement projects slash sinking fund rate? Okay.
Before you jump into capital, I got beat up again last week after our meeting about going out to roll off containers for businesses. I know we don't wanna open this up for bid because we'll be hurting our residents. So no, nothing we can do to help a business owner?
Yeah, let them negotiate on their own.
But did you have any more conversation with them, or are they willing to let that portion go or?
I did not talk, I did not ask that, no. What we did do was we compared one of, at least one of the other vendors with waste management and found that when they actually understood that you were in the city of DuBois and therefore under contract and should get a lower rate, it, they still, waste management still beat the competitor in terms of price.
For residential or commercial?
For commercial.
For a temporary roll-off container, it was a hundred dollars cheaper than place management.
What about a permanent?
Oh, the roll-offs, yeah, what about it? Yeah, the regular containers.
I don't know that. Zach, do you know that?
No, I do not know that. I don't know what their. Full rates are on.
The yard containers, you are two, six, and eight, or whatever, yeah, six, eight, ten. I have to say there is problems.
So what happens if someone gets one from a different company that just gets an ordinance, like they're code violation?
What was the question?
Question is, what happens if they violate the ordinance and just go ahead and get their own? You, you issue them a code, code violation, right?
Yes, as far as the temporary, you're someone that, I mean.
Either one.
Yeah, I mean, first off, we call the company that set the container and tell them to get it out of there, and then contacts made with the person that requested it to get it out of there, that they're in violation, and then if they wanna argue and not get it done, then it escalates.
You know, last week, we, the last meeting, we talked about, you know, when we cut trees, where the money should go. And everybody thought it was fair, that Treasure Lake got half, or no, you know, half went into general fund, half went to the water fund. Now, now what you're doing is you're punishing the businesses because you wanna give the residents a discount. That's not fair either. Everybody should pay their own fair share on the trash, whether you're, whether you're a commercial customer or a residential customer. I don't think the commercials should subsidize the residents. But we, we don't wanna open it up though.
Yeah, so you're saying.
I'm saying, if you got a bid. And yet, to the year somehow, I'll do that. Oh, yeah, if you had a bid, if you had a bid of, okay, here's a commercial bid, here's a residential bid, okay, separately, and then you said, here's the residential and commercials and bid them together, it's gonna be less if they can come around and pick up everybody. I'm just saying, it's not fair that businesses subsidize the residents.
I think we all agree not to, that's a good move not to open it right now, but.
No, you do it, you do it in two years.
The council could look at.
Yeah, you look at it in two years, I agree with that.
But you can look at it the other way, all of a sudden, every residential individual wants to get their own vendor to come in. You can probably, it'd be chaos.
You could probably make a better deal, picking all the residents up. I don't have a problem with that.
I get that, but a resident says, I don't like waste management, so I'm gonna go with somebody else. Because a business has the option of doing that, we give business a program free, I guess is what I'm asking.
I think it's, I think we're living American, that's capitalism, and they deserve that choice.
You're saying that individuals are, they're part of capitalism.
That's, that's something to look at, I'm not saying that's the right way, it might be cheaper for the residents to have everything.
You had ten different companies in here all.
But that doesn't work because then people don't pay.
Huh?
People don't pay. If, if, if you have ten garbage companies, they just don't pay, and the garbage is left behind. So you almost have to have the residents on one contract.
We have no way to enforce ten different garbage companies, now we want to shut off their water if they don't pay their.
Right, yeah, exactly.
It did help clean a lot of things up.
Yeah, it made it easier for Zach, I imagine.
Yeah, it did, a lot easier.
If we shut the water off, then the garbage just sits in the corner, then the city has to come clean it up. Well, that's a little. Loss, loss.
Usually motivates people.
Yeah.
I mean, the normal people, when they don't have water, it motivates them. I'm not, I'm not gonna say it doesn't motivate everybody, but.
But we don't have as many problems as we had.
Correct.
Trash.
Normal people, we talk trash a lot.
When we go back, get back into the budget.
Get back in the fight.
Yeah.
It's kind of emotional, the trash, for some reason.
Okay, are we, am I able to move on to capital now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we, we, I think I mentioned to you two weeks ago when we were in this room that we talked to the department heads and, and just the various entities that we work with, and said, if all the money could fall out of the sky, what is your wish list? And then it landed in these spreadsheets. Now, mind you, everyone was very reasonable. So it's not like they decided they wanted to, you know, well, never mind. So everything is in here that is vehicles that need replaced, apparatuses that need replaced. Further down, we have vehicles for public works, and then street vehicles, we put some blanket amounts in there, we spread them out over the different years that we know have to be replaced, and so this equipment list is all encompassing across all the departments for all of the equipment that we currently. We're gonna spell out public works equipment a little bit better, but that's what we have for today.
Public works is on their own.
They're on their own.
Yeah. Scott can figure it out. I mean, he gets mowers every year.
Should tomorrow be any different than today?
He get, he get mowers every year, so I mean.
Not every year, we did it last year.
Yeah, well, it wasn't your fault.
And then the, we have another page of projects and facilities, so across this are the, again, programs and across the departments, so the first line item you can see is the windows for the library. We know that we need to replace a lot of computer items for Windows ten. We have the new bells in here that we discussed for fire, we have policing items, roads. So everybody's projects, and they're in here by year. We looked at all the parks.
Can you give us some number like for?
Can you sort that by year and some of that?
Yep.
Yeah, like, like what is ten years?
And this is across departments, what we're looking at annually, and that we're working on, I'll go back up, but we're working on building out how we might pay for those things below.
What's the total ten-year expense on that? Do you do that? I did that for the other fund, it was about seven million.
Total ten-year for this?
Yeah.
Is thirty-eight million.
So it's three point eight million a year, I can't do, that's ten mils, eleven mils.
Again, a chunk of that can be paid.
Grants.
Through grants, some of that will be paid through state funds and such, but.
But it could very easily be three to five bills.
Yeah, three mils will only be a million.
Right, three mils is a million.
Right.
Well, it'd be a million a year.
Right.
That versus. To save enough, indeed, precise.
How far is that at least?
Numbing.
Is that ten years?
Hooking around the room, there are a few people, might be a year, ten years.
What are you saying?
Hey, don't speak for.
I just thought I'd break. Hey, I thought I'd break the ice, yes, you are right.
You know, thanks for putting that together, Mike, after, so I mean.
Yes.
You know, looking at everything and laying it out there, so, you know, the council, everyone else has something to look at, knowing what could be on the horizon, so, thank you.
This will be an ever-evolving document, so.
It doesn't include the dams.
Uh.
I thought I saw.
I think the dams are in here.
Are they?
Yes.
Wow.
Remember, this is if all the money fell out of the sky and we could do all the things.
It's only thirty-eight million, only four million dollars a year. Three point in here.
Will be a good average for grants.
So.
Four mils.
Four million.
Quarter. If we're doing four million a year, I think we could get around to this, twenty-five percent.
Yeah, it feels reasonable.
Do we have any, I'm back, did we have anything in for law is that it are?
Yes.
Okay.
In the admin, it's a thousand dollars.
So I think that a million a year in grant funding. So I think that a million a year in grant funding is very good.
If you're willing to pay that, then yes.
But do you still, do you still have two point eight come up?
So I think the question for you tonight is, twenty twenty-six, what are these things that staff are saying we need, are we willing to pay for, out of general fund tax dollars?
At least, I know you said that everyone was very reasonable, but I think it gets down to what do you have to average there for? Can you send us the spreadsheet through?
Yeah, definitely. So we know that there are some things that are rising to the top that are really important, like that Anderson Creek Dam project, we know that that is going to end up potentially to be a mandated project.
Yeah, mandated project, so with a mandated project by the state, so was there any type of funding for that?
Potentially, yes, and it will always require a match.
Yeah.
So, yes. We, our friends at HRG are looking at, at that, and they have given us a list of potential grant sources, and then the match dollars necessary and when they're open.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any correspondence from the state forcing us to start this?
Not, not yet.
So we don't know when it has to be, not by, against the drop date?
We do not, we know that, I mean, the state is looking at the project right now.
Engineering studies?
That's all, it's all in the.
Yeah, it's all in there, but I mean, that's what they're looking at now, come back and tell us what we have to do. Okay. And it doesn't seem like it's been, what, even fifteen years ago there, after you were helping back then? And it was secondary source of.
The other thing that I want to say is, we know that we have, have equipment on cyclical replacement cycles, and we know on the city side that we have foregone some of those replacements, just, you know, in order to be more, somewhat physically responsible, and so we know that we need to get those back and get them. Thoughts, comments? So I want to tell you a couple things about the general fund for just a minute, may I, may I go backwards?
Sure.
Um, so we've worked really hard since we talked to you last time, you know, every, every week that we discuss budget, we're looking at all the line items over again because we know that, I mean, we don't want to miss anything. And so some of the things that have come up since we talked to you last time is, we do know there are some debt assumptions from some fire companies, so we've included those. The other thing on the revenue side, though, we sat down and talked about the items that we could potentially sell, that are in our list of things that we expect to let go of in the new city. And so these are one-time things, but I want you to know that these are going to help us to get to a balanced budget for twenty twenty-six, which is really important because then twenty twenty-six is going to give us a really good look at what the new city will be, and it'll allow us that year to gather the data to see where we stand with all new, all things new going forward. And with that, in real time, we made a couple changes that we just discussed, and so as we work on this, remember that we started off about nine hundred thousand dollars in the red, and then we went to four hundred thousand, and with the items that you gave us today, I, I don't think we've made some tax changes yet, but we're about two hundred and forty thousand in the red. And if you recall, one mil is around three fifty, around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So every time we push our pencil, we feel like this, that we're getting this more refined. But I still want to caution everyone, the board, that we will be living very carefully because we don't walk into a new year and have all these revenues that we're talking about here. So we will be watching cash and continuing to, you know, really watch our house.
So what you're saying right now, with that, where that's at, a one mil increase takes care of?
A one mil from what was already proposed, yes. That doesn't cover any capital.
Okay, one mil will balance the budget.
Correct.
Okay, without capital.
Without.
Or reserve.
Without reserve.
You kind of need to look at it, capital and the reserve.
Yep, yep, your capital funding, I mean, we do have some of these funds that are earmarked for these projects, but the total capital that we're asking for in twenty-six is six point nine million. Four point six is building projects, and we do have some funding for those, two point one potentially in RACP, and then some potential match dollars that are coming from some CNY cap chips that are by loans. And then Kiwanis Trail project already has earmarked funds, and then the balance of industrial drive. So, that's six, this is five point two.
So the ten-year total was thirty?
Thirty.
Thirty-eight million, which we said was three point eight, but you're saying next year, you're looking at six?
Because of building projects.
Building projects, yeah.
Does that take out the funding for the, does that, does that include the RACP grants, taking out that two million?
That's the five million down here that I said we could potentially have earmarked towards the six point nine.
And twenty twenty-eight drops down slightly.
Twenty twenty-seven is eight million, but almost five million of that is water, and I believe that we are, we believe that we need a meter replacement project. Now, we can think of creative ways to do that, probably not going to be through much grant funding, although I'm not sure about that, but that's, that's, we, we would have to, I don't, I mean, this is a wish list, right? And that one might have to be a phase project.
Like a number of replacing meters before.
We're due to replace our meters, the meters are not accurate anymore, they're over twenty years old.
So that all the water meters, that would be, I'm talking about that. It doesn't seem at all. So why are we doing water meters out of the general fund?
We're not, it's out of water. It would be out of water, but it's still in capital.
So we would have money coming in.
We, right now, the water fund is about a half a million dollars that can go to reserve, but that meter project is about three and a half million.
Okay, so we would be increasing water rates to pay for a meter project.
Potentially, yeah.
Well, we would raise property tax to pay for water. That wouldn't be fair to some people.
No, I wasn't, I was not suggesting that. We were talking about totals of capital over, across the year, but you can see what department they, they're going to come from, where the totals come from.
So on the timber sales, though, was that, was there anything ever given back to us about the future cuts that they had laid out? Was that asked of Mr. Kane? If there's any type, like, he had, because he had stuff on a schedule, I know that's because of how they've done this for that many years, they have some sort of schedule.
Didn't he say we were due for a new plan?
Yeah. Is that what he said? I mean, it's hard to hear everything when you're dialing in on the phone, so that's why I'm asking.
I think he said we're, but we're ready for a new plan.
He said how many board feet will be done, he didn't really know the price.
Because it's such a crap.
Because you don't know.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, but I mean, projected cuts, because I know they looked at areas, I remember senior saying, hey, you know, in two years, you're looking at this year, we're going to need to do something here, but I just didn't know if they're, if they had some sort of plan or schedule to be factored in for ten years, what, what the potential cost would be, so.
No, the plan, the inventory, and the boundary marks all need redone, we're due for that one.
Due for that, okay.
We're long with it.
Okay. All right. Wow. Just wondering again.
So how do we want to get to a place of general decision about what general fund's capital items need to be put in the twenty twenty-six budget, capital budget? Okay, so by, Elliot's saying, process-wise, you need more time, so if we send out this list, you all kind of vote what does and does not need to be done next year, then that'll give us the number. At this point, if it's not grant funded, grant funded, then it won't be grant funded in twenty twenty-six, most likely. So it would then be pretty much a straight general fund expense.
So at least you're saying we need to come up with one point six million bucks, right?
If you want to fund everything in there.
If you want to fund everything for twenty-six.
What'd you say, five mil?
Ask your old pencil.
It's five mil. Get us there.
If we go to that, that five mil?
It regenerates a whole.
Shoot me now, I think, shoot me now would be a good idea.
How, how do we compare the other places with tax, tax rates right now?
Yeah, and, I'm sorry, I meant to grab that. In comparison to the other boroughs in, I resonate a borough, you're the only city in Clearfield County, so there's no one else to compare to. In terms of boroughs, you're middle of the pack, you're not even close to the highest.
I think Pine Township has zero.
Yes, Pine Township is the only one that has zero. Has zero, yeah. Well, just most likely, there, first of all, I have almost no services, would be my bet, and they're probably, do they have state funds or something that can cover them?
I think they get gas, water.
Oh, well, yeah.
We could go to Kersey in Elk County, I think they have zero. Of course, they have landfill.
So, currently, the, the boroughs that, in, in Clearfield County that have higher tax rates than you.
Yeah.
Would be Grandpian at twelve and a half, Trevona at fifteen, Wallaston at twelve. Oh, that is all the boroughs, yeah, so that, yeah, so that's it.
I'm really good compared like Butler.
Well, so the problem is, you'd have to do a common level ratio comparison in order to actually compare to another county, because they're not on the same assessment as you. It can be done, but it's kind of intricate math, so.
The city hasn't raised taxes in what, fifteen years?
Eighteen, maybe twenty.
Eighteen that I know of, I actually heard of once.
So I don't know how you continue to give the police department a three percent raise every year, public works probably somewhere close to that, two percent, and not raise your taxes.
They borrowed money.
Okay, so now it's time.
It's time you not do that.
Well, a lot of that was, though, was a lot of, a lot of changes that were made, you know, Scott's doing the job of what seven people used to get paid for before, things like that, so there were a lot of things done that way as well.
That's what I said, look, that's what I said. Go ahead, sorry.
Equipment, to where we were doing more projects ourselves versus paying contractors a higher fee, so there's been a lot of things done over the years to reduce the cost to keep that, so.
But I feel like now everybody's, in the audience, is having sticker shock because we're talking about having to come up with a million dollars.
I think, I think, you know, what the presentation event put on there showing, you know, the inflation, and everything like that, pretty much explained it right there to where everyone's done, both municipalities done as much as they could over the years to, to not raise taxes, and I just think now with everything that's, both municipalities have done it, it just gets to that point where there's nothing else to really cut back on.
I wanted to clarify, did I misspoke just a minute ago? There are several more boroughs that have higher tax rates than you, for whatever reason, I only started in the middle of the page. Chester Hills, twelve and a half, Clearfield Borough is fourteen and a half, Coldport is fourteen, and Kerrinsville is fourteen, so you're actually at the lowest, you're, well, you're not the lowest, you're the fourth in the lowest right now.
I have to believe we offer a lot more services.
We offer a lot more services.
So you're going to set this out to us?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then, I guess, your homework for Monday? As a reminder, we have to publish this thing, vote to, vote to authorize it at the meeting on the nineteenth, and so Monday, if you could come with your, these are the capital items we actually think we need, then we can calculate the tax. Let me go ahead and pull up the, just, duplicate my screen just a second.
I'll send you PDFs of the water sewer in general fund, and then all of the capital items that are on the list, along with the ten-year spreadsheet.
This is a thing I would do.
What? Oh, the timeline? The timeline? We're dealing with very complex projects.
It's easy, you know, it's a timeline, but.
Yeah, okay, so we are here, so by the tenth, you have the capital list together, then
we can calculate, we would then need to advertise, publish, and then advertise immediately on the twenty-sixth, wait, yeah, that's enough days to get a newspaper, so that you could then pass it on the seventeenth of December, and it will go into effect. Just as a little reminder, the newly elected officials, a couple of you were in the room, or wait, one of you, right, glad I saw, anyway, you'll have the opportunity to reopen this in the new year.
Is there a timeline on it? How much time you have to?
Yeah.
It's all February.
February something.
Yeah, well, it has to be.
It's a pretty tight time.
Yes, it has to be approved by, by February fifteenth, and you need the twenty-day period of review, plus some advertising days, thus, yeah, you're only going to have like two weeks. You get cheated, and you have like a meeting to, but, but, I mean, if it's that, if there's that much to change, then it is what it is.
Just mention it so everybody knows.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a lot of time, but, you know, you have, you have a week or two to play with it if the new board had directors. Okay, the tax model, so there's two things to show you here, the one is. The one is tax calculator. So currently, in this model, you did like a 1 mil tax increase, or the city saw a new 1 mil tax increase. That would basically be because of these things. Number one, as you're probably all well aware, the water and sewer fund in the past has taken revenues from those proprietary funds to kind of support the general operations. Whether or not that was or was not okay or kosher in the past is kind of irrelevant. We know in the future, it would not be kosher, if for no other reason than you would be putting the burden of general government on the people that are using water and sewer and not everybody else. So that would be inequitable. That amount is about 3 and 1/2 mils. So to your question of like, how have we not raised taxes over all these years? There's two answers. One is, well, actually, there's a lot of deferred capital, that's number one. Number two is a lot of debt, a lot, a lot, a lot of debt. And number three would be, I guess there's four. Now that I think about it.
Just make it five.
Yeah. There's the operational savings that have happened through, like the consolidation essentially that, you know, have already happened, such as not filling positions, consolidating positions and so forth. And then, and then there's this rent replacement. So basically, 3 and 1/2 mils has to go towards replacing that revenue. To cover the fire side of things, there's essentially 2 mils. And so we're really looking at, for pure general government, 5 point, we're looking at 5 and 1/2 mils, which is less than your currently. So to those of you that are wondering, like, where am I seeing the savings from consolidation? It's right there. Your general government costs, your general millage is actually going down. But it has to be replaced by the rent, so to speak, from the water and sewer. We have to cover the added cost of Sandy Township Fire Department, as well as the replacement of the revenue that's going towards the whole fire department in the future and so forth. These things add together to create this. And you just said as well that we're changing this to 0.5. So you'd be looking at an overall, something like 13 mils. Now, if you want to know, I'm going to change that back for a second unless I scribble. Lisa's.
It's happening in real time, so.
Yeah. I'm just going to change it back. But here is that model of, we just took a random house, a hypothetical house that actually, it's really, it's based on a real house, but we're saying that this house is at 123 Treasure Lake Road, and its assessed value is 500,000. So in that model, you see your tax was 70-some mils between the school district, the county, and the current Sandy Township, as well as Sandy Fire and Library. If you modeled a 12, what did I just say, 12.75? So that would be total mils of 7.4, approximately a 5% tax increase. Overall.
Overall, or what?
For your overall taxes, for your overall property taxes.
Okay.
So in that model, if before you were paying $473, in the new model, we just talked through, you'd be paying almost $200 more.
And that's on a 500,000 dollar house.
So anyway, we can play with this in real time and show you what that would have. So what I'm saying is, we don't have to have all the answers on Monday night, but if you could come with a prioritization of those capital items, then all we have to do over here on this spreadsheet is add that capital item here. So we wanted to go with 800,000, just for fun. Then we know that we will need, you know, another mil and a half, which is what I just modeled, so. It's closer to 2. But anyway, we're ready to go. Come with your capital list, plug in these numbers in real time, and then negotiate what the millage would look like, and then what the tax implication would be on a general user. Anything else for tonight?
Anybody? What would we want in public comments? Mr. Lombardo?
Do you mind being to speak up? Dave Lombardo. First off, I just want to congratulate everybody that won the election, and a lot of work for everybody there, so I want to congratulate you all. I do want to bring up something in the election a little bit, taking negatively, it looked like there was a lot of party voting, and I was a non-party. And I was happy with my close to 1,700 votes based on my platform, which you had heard over and over, please don't raise the millage for Sandy. You're going to bring down the millage to meet Sandy, the DuBois, oh, DuBois City, keep it the same at least for a year, so it makes it a little bit more palatable. And it looks like you're moving in that direction, but please, please continue to do it. I mean, the votes were only like 2.3% less than the seventh person that got on the board. So I wanted to push that a little bit to continue. Some of the stuff you just came up with are fast and easy, fees, the pool, places without baseball diamonds and that. I think you should look real hard at two tiers, if it's residents, residents to pay, I grew up in an area that the suburbs did this, non-residents were not allowed to use facilities, you know, in the suburbs, so they don't want us city people coming in there. Or like the baseball diamonds do give profit loss, but if you're somebody from, a team from DuBois, you get a different rate. I don't have a problem paying for that, making an amenity, those type of things. But I think the non-outside people, you should look hard, we invite them in to use the pool, how much are we going to charge them extra, it shouldn't be the same. And I'm just using those two, you need to look at all your fees. The dam project, I'm just going to throw something out, I think that's way down the line if you're dealing with DDP. I knew I had a timber client that had a dam, and it took years and years and years, over 10 years for DDP to come up with it. Yes, you have to save the money, in the end, they had to fix it. When you were talking about capital of the demolition, and capital the same thing, when you go out and do a demolition, you just hear like 45, 35,000, whatever, into it, but you go after collections. And I don't know what you end up getting on the collections. I would assume that if they don't pay it, maybe you could take the property over and resell it and get it back on the tax rolls. I saw the capital for all the vehicles, I would suggest strongly, you know, like when the fire trucks are being replaced, they're going to sell another, they're going to sell those trucks. And there's a lot of money in there, both ends, very expensive to buy, but they retain their value. Why don't we just do that in the capital, or make some predictions in the capital to show a little bit better of what you really need, is that money goes back. You came from a fire truck, you sell the fire truck, so instead of a million dollars, it's 800,000. And the same with the regular vehicles, I would suggest you look at that. I think you answered this, Lisa, you had a water line, or water money in there for capital, and I assume that's all coming out of users' fees for the water. You just threw in capital. So if you're, I think you said that, with replacing meters and stuff, the users will replace that. That will not be a general fund. So make sure that that's separated out, and you're not saying we need a million dollars for 800,000, so we're raising the millage.
Correct.
And lastly, I want to talk about the timber sale. I wasn't here last meeting, or I got up and gave a little spiel there. I saw it on the website, I went through it all. I heard some, you know, not very nice feedback from some folks. My understanding is water and sewer, and some of the members of the council brought it up, that you have to be fair. Ben just brought up something, being fair for the water people and the garbage people and everything else. So it needs to hold its own. Sewer and water, there's a big segment in Treasure Lake, I don't know how many people there are, maybe about 4,000, or 25, 2800, 3,000 homes now. There's the people in Sandy on Septic and their own wells, they should not have to pay a mil or anything towards the water systems. And so when you were talking about the timber, my understanding is that timber is city-owned property, like the pool, like the trucks and everything. And to take half of that away from, so only certain people, i.e. those on the city water, get a benefit from it, and the rest of the community doesn't, is not right. It is not keeping to, holding the usage of the water and sewer to the folks that are actually utilizing it. I think you should take it, if you want a reserve fund, maybe put half in the reserve fund, and then the other part of it, just put into the general fund. And as a forester, yeah, you can't always predict how much it's going to cost and stuff. So I would ask you, before Monday, if you guys are going through that, really look at that. You should not give half to the water and sewer folks. And if you borrow money from them, you need to pay it back, and if that's a good thing. So, and then finally, on the water and sewer, I had Alyssa, when I fast forwarded a little bit, you guys are all reading off your water bills. I'm going to read off mine, I don't know how it compares. I used 3,000 gallons last month, I have a water bill from Aqua, there's a rate per gallon for water, rate per gallon for sewer, and then there's fixed rates built in there. I don't know if they fluctuate with the gallons, and I'm paying $159 a month. If I was on DuBois' water system on 3,000 gallons, what would be my bill? I mean, you were throwing this around, that you're saying, well, the people are paying everything, they're getting a big tax decrease. Even with the millage going up for Sandy, they're going to get a tax decrease on it. So 3,000 gallons, I think, you guys all had your calculators on. You have no idea how much that would be for DuBois people? I pay Aqua. No, I know, I'm saying, I used 3,000 gallons, and for Aqua, it was $159. How does that compare? I heard a lot of talk last meeting about the water bills within the city, and gee, we got to take half a million dollars and stick it and give it to the water. Although it's an asset for the entire city, it should be considered an asset for the entire city, not just one sudden. If you want to subsidize water, people, think about getting the Aqua, everybody on Treasure Lake on Aqua, subsidize them, and those with Septic, and those with Wells, subsidize them equally, that you're subsidizing the city water.
Oh, I, I, I just disagree.
I know you do.
I just can't even believe you said that. I'm sorry, I just.
I'm not saying to do that, I'm saying, no, I said, if that's what you're talking about, I said, just put it in the general fund.
Aqua money?
No.
I thought that's what you just said.
I think all your numbers that you presented the last time came out to be about $63 per 1,000 gallons is what the rate was going to be roughly around there, with the water and sewer mixed combined. So at that, with a 1,000 gallons, you're looking at $189 for 3,000 gallons.
So it's about the same as folks in Treasure Lake. So it's not different. We're all paying a higher bill.
Alyssa Keane?
She left.
Board member comments? Jim?
Yeah, congratulations to everybody that won the election, and thanks to everyone who did show an interest in, you know, the city government, you know, all these, all kinds of things to do, all kinds of committees, so please be available as they start filling different committees and stuff like that, get to the, into the new city, it'd be great to see some of those folks on there.
I'm glad the election's over. But I thought it was a pretty good turnout, I heard some precincts were as high as 40%.
Yeah, Craig County, you were at 40%.
That's a pretty good answer, but people paying attention.
I just want to throw out there about the water, the watershed. Those places at the watershed, originally it was for, the force there was at the watershed, it was purchased specifically for the watershed, and it should, you should make money off that, it should benefit the watershed. And that's, and that's why most, if not all, other places do it. Like the gentleman said, the timber sales in Bradford, PA, all benefited the water. I mean, they put the money in the savings account, and now they have the lowest, probably the lowest rates in Pennsylvania, close to. And that was just because they, that money they got from timber sales went to the watershed. They, and I don't see how you can use that money, just stick it out there and say, well, now it's for everyone else. And also, I talked to people that they might decide, if that money does get used, they might decide to file a lawsuit against us to prevent that.
Sam, the only distinction I bet is, I bet everyone in Bradford has the same water. It's not like Sandy has some of that.
Well, I think there's other ones that have, there's other, they sell water at other places also, other. Well, why should that matter, though?
Well, very simply, the entire resident population, if they're using the same water source, it's benefiting universally, rather than Mr. Lombardo.
Well, but that's not entirely true. Every instance I saw was the, even if someone else did use the water, the users benefited.
But in the new city, how many different water sources?
All right, but I don't think we can have a back and forth in conversation with, well, with comments. That's a discussion for next time on agenda, I don't want to put yourself on a list, maybe you could go with just Sam.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I'm saying, it's just, that's just, that's just the way other, and we're getting back to the way they, the old city did things, by, hey, let's borrow money from the water fund to pay for other things, and that's basically what, and that was never right in my book.
No, that wasn't fair to people.
Because they used to, they used to subsidize the city all those years.
Yeah, back then, everyone living in the city was on city water and sewer, so it was a little different.
It's a lot different than what you're talking about now, so.
Barry?
Thank you. First of all, I would really like to comment on the election yesterday. From where I stood, people were nice. From where I stood, people were, were nice. We had the two judge candidates at our place. I, I didn't hear a discouraging word. Sat with us and stood with us. I thought the people were very respectful. The candidates stood aside, nobody got excited, so vote for me, vote for me, and that's what government is. And tonight is another perfect example of what good local government is all about. You know, we're, we're hashing this thing out, it's not going to get easy, I hate to tell you. And good government sits down and talks to each other, and we're seeing a great example of that. So I appreciate the audience give and take, and I appreciate the comments that we've had amongst ourselves. Thank you.
I'm going to make this easy, I'm going to ditto what Barry said.
Mark, that's too long. Auto pen. Elliot?
Now, congratulations to all the elected officials that won last night, I wish you the best of luck. Congratulations to the DuBois girls, Lady Beaver soccer team, that had their first state playoff victory last night, very exciting game. And wish them the best of luck in the next round on Saturday. That's it for me.
Great, thank you. Call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
We adjourned.